Okay, ready? Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the April fourteenth Town Listen Work Session. And I ask everybody to please silence your cell phones. And at this time, I'll ask everybody to stay into the public.
I would just flag of the United States of America into the Republic which stands as one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This time I ask for a moment of sound reflection, please. Thank you very much. Approval of the agenda, and I would like if there's something for senior senator to be added?
Yes, there is. It will be for higher, so I'd like to add that to the agenda. And if there's no other additions, I'd like to make a motion to approve it.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Approval of the meeting minutes, we'll start with the March twenty-fourth regular town board meeting.
Motion carried. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Okay. And then the December twenty-third regular town board meeting.
I'll make that motion, I review them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Abstract of claims, Councilman Jacoby.
Yeah, what?
Do you have it?
Yeah. I move to approve regular abstract opinions twenty-five dash zero zero seven nine five through twenty-five dash zero zero nine three five. And recommend total payment in the amount of eight hundred eighteen thousand seven hundred eighty-five dollars and eleven cents. In post-audit, in the amount of thirty-six thousand five hundred eight dollars and fifty-four cents.
That's a motion?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Department head statements. Go ahead, go ahead.
In the clerk's office, the notice is from Niagara Falls Country Club. This is a notice that a renewal for an alcoholic beverage license is applied for by the Niagara Falls Country Club, five oh five Mountain View Drive, close to New York. King County of Manager for on-term assistance consumption at the halfway house and singles from the beverage department.
Okay, and I don't think we have any others to take any action with this meeting, but thank you. Anything else? Any last questions? Chief, any?
Just a reminder, the board, next board meeting, we are going to square two part-time officers.
Okay. Tim, anything?
Just working on two unsafe structures that I'm hoping to have before you guys at the end of the month.
Okay.
Um, just the, um, we're going to have an e-waste recycling collection event on Saturday, May third, from nine to noon. And Mitch is going to help out at the, it's going to be at the garage. Yep, and Modern is helping, and then Sunpay will pick up, so.
What will they take?
Um, they will take anything with a cord.
Oh, electronic.
Except for, yeah, not, nothing with free, I know fridges or air conditioners or, um, smoke detectors.
A lot of people show up with cordless drills last time with batteries, and they don't, we don't take that.
Yeah, she didn't mention that, but she said anything with a cord. I'll have a list, I'm going to start, I'm going to start getting everything out tomorrow. Waiting for some more stuff from them to start advertising, but Tamara's going to have it on the electronic board, and we'll have it on Facebook and.
Okay, so it's May third, nine to noon, electronic recycling.
Yeah. Yeah.
At the, at the high grad.
Yes.
Thank you.
Who sets the cones up, is it the chief? Do you remember, Mitch, do you know?
We will.
Deputy Supervisor Conrad, any?
Nothing, well, just me personally, I'm going to be out for a little while because of medical procedures, so I'm hoping to be back on the, for the meeting on twenty eighth.
Okay, well, hopefully we don't see it. Danny Zano, anything?
No.
Mitch?
Do they all got a copy of my two eighty-four for paving in the highway for the year?
I didn't, I didn't, I, yeah. So you need the approval for the supervisor to sign it?
Yeah.
All the board, all of them.
This is coming up for, give it up to be approved and then, uh, first signature, signature, give me a second, folks.
Right.
Yeah.
I think basically we talked to the two roads. Okay. So I'll read it real quick. For the year twenty twenty-five, the below sign parties agreed to spend the sum of seven hundred five thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars to be used for the permanent improvement of the following roads. Micro pave, one hundred thirty-five thousand seven hundred ninety-seven. Paving, four hundred fifty-two thousand six hundred sixty-three dollars, and then general repairs of one hundred seventeen thousand and eight dollars. Okay, just for the micro paving, it's going to be Wolf Run, Homestead Place, Lewiston Road, north and south Brookside. South Hewitt Drive, North Hewitt Drive, Edmond Drive, Walmore Road. The crack patching will be West Street, Miller Road, Scoville Drive, Cuba Drive, Walker Drive, Schoolhouse Road, Langdon Road. Profile asphalt will be Myers Hill Road, Dickersonville Road, Walmore Road. And chip ceiling is Old Rancinville Road, Schoolhouse Road, Albright Road, Simmons Road, and Langdon Road. Profile asphalt is milling.
Milling and paving.
Milling and paving, so that's, milling and paving will be Myers Hill Road, Dickersonville Road, and Walmore Road. So, I ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried, and I ask for a motion for the supervisor to be able to sign.
I'll make that motion, let the supervisor can sign.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Okay. So Mitch, I'll make sure you get that.
Thank you.
Anything else? Do you have anything?
Uh, no, we just continue to work on our main pa- main panel project.
Okay. And then, Bob, anything?
Uh, just to let the board know that the Riverfront Park Pavilion and Fishing Pier and Giant France is advertised. We're looking to take bids on May sixth, I think it's the two sixth, if I'm not mistaken, and looking to award, if all goes well, I believe on the May twelfth work session, if I got my day right.
Okay, good. Melinda?
I'm around here, John.
Okay. Um, I'm going to read, this is a thank you card, it says, "An update from the Sanborn Peaking Free Library and Profit twenty twenty-five. During the heavy rains of the past week, it was reassuring to know that the library and the collection were safe from water damage because of the new roof. The new roof, or the new, the roof replacement was successfully completed with thanks to additional funding support from New York State Library Construction Aid and the support of the towns, and support of the town. Thank you, thanks, thank you to you and the other members of the Town Board Lewiston for the additional funds given toward the new roof. In the next few weeks, many students will be on spring break, but the secure building library is able to offer several programs for the children in our area. These programs are usually well-attended, thank you for the support you have given to the Sanborn Peaking Free Library so we can serve our community." And it's signed by the library director, Linda Duke, so wanted to put that on the record.
I'm sorry, Mr. Supervisor, I did have one thing, more things.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, I cleared it with the town attorney, I've given you a resolution that I was looking for approval on for the installation of LPRs throughout the town. The town attorney has had a chance, Mr. Bax has had a chance to look at it, he didn't have any issues with it.
Well, he, Al, are you there?
I am here, yes.
We do not have that resolution in front of us.
I don't think it was put on the agenda today, um, I believe. Um, and I would just, I would defer the chief, I mean, has that been circulated amongst everyone? I have taken a look at, at the, uh, resolution, and it does, uh, it is, uh, fine for your consideration. It's a matter of whether it's before the board this evening or not.
Yeah, we don't have a copy of it, two weeks, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, two weeks, the chief says two weeks is okay.
That's certainly fine, that, that's fine.
Okay. Um, I think that's everybody. Nothing under old pending business, um, nothing under new business, under Supervisor Broderick. Um, Igno, water penalties. Did that be you? I never met, I saw you come in, so I assumed.
Yeah.
That, Igno, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, my, I switched bank accounts, and my payment made to the town Lewiston for the water, um, due in August, I believe it's the twenty-first, I'm not quite sure. Um, it was returned because I put incorrect account number. In the midst of getting that corrected, I was assessed, um, it went over two time periods. I'm just looking for the second time period, um, from the thirtieth, where the final penalty was assessed as I was, I was in contact with them.
So I'm going to read a letter, so Tamara Burns couldn't be here tonight, so she provided this letter, and it's in regards to Miss Igno. This is Town Board members, Miss Igno paid her water sewer bill online with an E-check and entered an incorrect account number, causing the payment to be returned. We had a twenty-dollar return check fee and penalties on the account for the payment being late. Miss Igno was paying charges on the account, but never the full balance. Due to this, the payment was being applied to furthest outstanding balance, and there were penalties still being assessed on the most current bill. Our system automatically does this. The water department reversed penalties in the amount of eight dollars and fifty-eight cents on twelve-three. Payment was still not being made in full, which caused, um, penalties. So the balance, penalty balance now is, principal balance was ten dollars and ninety-two cents, penalty balance was two dollars and twenty-nine cents, for a total balance of thirteen dollars and twenty-one cents. So I believe you're looking for the Town Board to approve waiving at thirteen dollars and twenty-one cents.
Yes, please.
Okay, so, um, I, I don't have a problem with it, um, but I asked Miss Igno to come here, and I didn't have the authority to waive this on my own. They would take the whole board to vote to waive the penalties, you can see how it happened, um, it was something to do with the, um, E-check, and as I said, I don't have a problem.
I'll make that motion, second.
So a motion is second.
Supervisor, any, just a second?
Yeah.
Um, the one thing I wanted to make sure that the board knew is that it is their desire to waive the fee. Uh, just make sure that you put it on the record that this obviously is something separate apart from waiving, um, water, uh, water charges relating to broken pipes. We have a policy about that, and this is not in any way, um, another contraption of that particular policy.
Okay, so, so I'll note that this is due to a computer glitch, and, um, you know, we're not going to blame anybody, just a computer glitch, it had nothing to do with the actual water, water usage or anything like that. So we have a motion and a second, uh, total balance of thirteen dollars and twenty-one cents, anybody have any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Okay.
You can start the water off, if you want.
Hey. I don't know this guy.
Well, you're, best, you're a better person. You're good with people you don't know. So we have an Eagle Scout presentation. So do us a favor, speak real loud in the microphone and start with your name.
Hello, my name is Anthony Yase, and I'm here to see if, uh, you got the town fund, a Eagle project, we're, we're doing a frame for the dog park in, um, the owner of the dog park, um, uh, he asked us to make a frame to bolt up the new signs to the park because they got blown away, and, um, it would need, we're going to use cedar wood out of it, and then, like, build the frame, and then, so we have, like, a whole new thing, like, the rules and stuff for the dog park.
Do you have, do you have any type of proposal, like any type of diagram, what it's going to look like or anything like that?
Uh, yes, I do, yes.
So when you said the dog owners, it's the dog owners group that, um, uses the park and kind of cleans up, which is head led by Chris Alata, and that's who he met with, was Chris Alata, yeah. Do you want to bring it up? Yeah, bring it up, and do you have an estimate on what it's going to cost?
Uh, yeah, I have all the figures.
Okay.
I just do a little sketch, that's like the, the frame, the outside.
Okay. Is it going to be just one, one sign?
No, there's going to be multiple signs, like, there's four signs, there's one, two for the large dog sign, and two for the small dog sign.
Okay.
And then, like, where is here? Estimated price that I have was two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-four cents.
Okay, and you were looking for the town to supply the, to, to take care of the supplies?
Yes.
Okay. And who would mount, would you mount?
Yeah, maybe.
How would you, and that could mount, do you have an idea?
Yeah, they're going to bolt it up to the fence, so it's sturdy and won't, like, any weather.
Right. So the sign could be on post, it's going to be actually attached to the fence.
Yes.
And was, was the dog owners group going to help you at all with it?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, does anybody have any questions? Um, he, uh, he first approached us about possibly building a shelter, um, but I had showed Tim his first diagram in terms of it's going to have to be a lot more than that, and it got to be a little too much of a project for him, so we met with Chris Alata, um, I put them in touch with each other, and this is the solution, they came up with, to make the dog park better, you know, the rules and everything, and we'll go from there. So, does anybody have any questions, any questions? So basically, you need approval to do the project, and then for the town to, to fund it. Okay, um, take that motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the project.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried, and again, what was the price again, two hundred? Well, we'll do this, uh, can I get a motion to buy the project up to three hundred dollars?
I'll make that motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. So do you have something for me to sign?
Uh, oh, this, yeah.
And I guess I'll ask for a motion to get the supervisor to sign his.
I'll make a motion that the supervisor can sign for the three hundred dollars for the dog park project.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
So Jackie, he would buy the wood and then bring the receipts in, and he would issue a, a check, is that what we get them?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Here's the actual, like, signature part.
So real quick, just so you know, this is going to be the Town Lewiston, not, not the building Lewiston. So it's just the Town Lewiston. Okay, there you go.
Steve?
Okay.
Do you know where the, where are you buying the materials from, because of the tax exemption?
Oh, oh, we go.
Okay, if you can, I can get your email from you, Steve, or, so I can send a tax exempt certificate.
Did you email me already? I don't, I think we talked on the phone, I didn't email you.
Oh, we had, we had text phone, yeah.
Do me a favor, tomorrow, just, just send a, just a test email to supervisor@townlewiston.us. Here, I got a problem. Just email me the information, because we have a tax exempt.
Thank you very much.
Okay, good luck.
Yeah, enjoy it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Keep this one, too. Okay, Al, legal, um, resolution for sale of abandoned alleyway?
That's correct. That's a, that's a resolution, and before you relative to, uh, an application of a resident, um, came in, and I asked you, this sale, uh, I believe is, uh, is being approved, or is approved by anyone? It's just subject to, uh, personal referendum, uh, and this resolution, um, basically identifies that.
Okay. So, do I need to read the whole resolution?
I don't think so, it says it down, as drafted.
Okay, um, just so everybody knows, um, where it says, "Whereas the assessor's office for the town has investigated the property and with all due diligence subscribed to fair market value," it's one hundred dollars. I think everybody saw the email, there wasn't any, it was left behind. So we just need to approve the resolution as presented?
That's correct, and then again, it is, it is a, a decision that the board makes, um, it's authorized by law, by statute. Um, the obligation of the town is to just make sure that, um, first of all, the fair market value has been assessed, which it has, and then secondly, um, we're going to be posting this in various places to make people aware of the fact that we're intending to transaction, uh, and that's exactly what the resolution says. I'll be working with Jackie, uh, I'm sorry, with, um, Amy to, to work out the publication areas and the content of the notes.
Okay.
Has the sale, has the sale been finalized between, uh, with the gardens?
No, it has, it has, it has not, no, it's, there's been no sale, um, as of yet. Ultimately, what has to happen is it has to be put to public referendum first, and if no one responds with an petition to say, but they disagree with the, with the, with the transaction, uh, then it can be formalized.
I'm talking about has the actual property, like, not this little alleyway, has the actual property been closed on, like, the house and the barn?
No, it cannot, it cannot, and this is a title of amendment, so it's an issue that, uh, they're trying to resolve in order to sell it to someone else.
So then my next question is, is, um, if this is approved, will it stay with the property then if this deal doesn't go through?
Oh, yes, that's true, but this is a transaction between the Town Lewiston and the current owner.
Okay, great, okay, thank you.
And Al, just, just to clarify, this is only the piece of property that is within the boundaries of that piece of property, it doesn't include?
Yes, you're exactly right. So what happens is if you were to look at the two, well, the parcel that's, the two parcels that are created as this, um, abandoned alleyway bisects the lot, we're effectively connecting the corners so that it becomes one.
Okay, because I don't know if everybody saw the map, um, if we just abandoned everything that was under the town's alleyway, it would be giving somebody the property for a hundred dollars that, that basically backs up to everybody else's, then that would just be a nightmare situation. So that's, we, you know, I just wanted to make, clarify that. So can I get a motion to approve the resolution as presented?
Motion.
Second.
A motion of second, it's a roll call vote, correct, Al?
That is correct, yes, thank you.
Okay.
John Jacoby?
Yes.
Rob Morial?
Yes.
Jason Myers?
Yes.
Sarah Electra?
Yes.
Steve Robert?
Yes. Okay, anything else on that, Al?
Sorry, I couldn't find the, uh, the button, no, there's nothing to turn to ask for. And then I will, as I mentioned, I'll be working with Amy to do the publication, and we'll have it on the agenda for a future meeting, um, for vote ultimately, depending on which way it goes, but there's any objection to it.
Okay. So, also under legal, and I'll give you this, we, we're members, Town Lewiston's members of Niagara Power Coalition. Our relicensing agreement with NIPA expires this September. Um, every, uh, participant in that has a representation of an attorney. The group itself is represented as a whole by Mark Gabriel, but everybody has an attorney. I reached out to Tom Seaman, Tom Seaman, who's going to be unable to represent the town, I spoke with Al. Al feels like he probably in this situation, um, isn't available to represent the town. So after talking with, um, the attorney for Niagara County, um, I'm going to make a motion to hire Henry Wataszak as the town attorney to represent the town for the NIPA relicensing only. Um, and, and that would be at a rate of three hundred dollars an hour. So I'll make a motion to, um, hire Henry Wataszak as the town attorney for the licensing.
Now, second.
So the motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No, opposed, Nick.
Okay. So, motion, uh, motion passed, three to two. Uh, Al, do you want to add anything to that?
Yes, uh, actually, I, I have a, a long history with Henry Wataszak. I think this is one of those issues as far as the town is concerned, that requires not only the legal expertise, but also knowing the political, uh, landscape, especially with NIPA going in there, and I think we need to be well represented as the rest of the entities are, I think Mr. Wataszak, so good job.
Okay, thank you very much. Engineering, Bob, anything under?
All right.
Finance, Jackie?
Yeah. I previously submitted, uh, budget revision for twenty twenty-five in your, uh, board packets, and I ask for approval of that budget revision tonight.
I went over with Jackie, I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Um, and then, USI Insurance?
Yes, so tonight I'm asking the board for approval to, um, go with USI Insurance Company again for our property insurance for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six year, as well as our, um, cyber insurance. We use them as a broker, and we've had some issues, and our insurance came in fifty-seven percent higher than what we paid last year. I budgeted twenty-two percent. So it came in at a deficit of eighty-two thousand dollars. They, um, there's, the reason for this is increased claims, market, uh, inflation, and equipment and property value increases. But, um, I was very disappointed when I saw this, but it's kind of the reality of where we're at right now. There are, um, many forms for the supervisor to have to sign, so I ask for your approval, not only to, uh, have our policy with them again, but for the supervisor to sign all the paperwork necessary for the policy.
And then do you need to move money into an account to cover the deficit?
I will, but I'll have that budget revision at the next meeting.
Okay. So can I get a motion to approve USI, um, insurance renewal?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Anybody have any questions for Jackie?
Everybody spoke with Jackie and Supervisor today about that, and had a pretty thorough explanation, certainly not any fault of ours, you know, I mean.
I would like to say that our cyber insurance came in exactly as it was last year, um, and I would like to give credit because of all of the IT and, uh, computer, um, upgrades for security that we put in place is, is the reason that we came in at the same price that we paid last year. So all of those efforts are definitely paying off.
Um, Jackie, as, as far as in future years, is there a way, if, um, we have, like, a better record of claims, that that number will eventually come down?
Absolutely.
Okay.
You are insured according to your claim.
Okay, thank you.
Along with, you know, a couple other things, if, if you had to replace a building right now with the market price of, uh, materials and labor, it's higher.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried. We also need a motion to allow the supervisor to sign all the documents.
I'll make that motion to allow the supervisor to sign the documentation for the USI insurance renewal for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jacoby?
I have nothing to add, thanks.
Councilman Morial?
Yeah, we have one from the planning board. The planning board meeting in regular session on March twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, reviewed a revised site plan conversion of, of exiting Fort Bay Power Wash to JP two propane business office and maple syrup business previously, and was previously approved by the Town Board on January ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Request from J. Request from J Claus of twenty-eight forty-six Honor Selmant Road, SBL number one-one point two-zero dash two dash four-two. The planning board recommends a negative deck with regard to sequel, no changes as previously approved, so that's a motion to accept the negative deck.
Okay, I'll second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
And then the planning board recommends approval of a revised site plan, presented with the condition of full hours being added to the plan.
I'll second.
We have a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.
We'll be able to get some maple syrup in the town.
Uh, Councilman Myers?
Uh, some of this knowledge from the Sanborn Historical Association, they have the regular meeting Tuesday, April twenty-second at seven P M. Uh, the special speaker series program, uh, The Local War of Eighteen Twelve by John McSwan. Uh, doors, actually, doors open at five-thirty, and the potluck dinner is at six, um, for that meeting, and then they also have a car parts swap meet coming up on May fourth, from seven A M to two P M, over at the farm museum. Um, outside setup is free, there's breakfast at seven, a lunch at ten, and they are also, uh, planning for their pork loin dinner, and that would be on Saturday, May seventeenth, from four to seven P M, or until it's sold out, uh, for dining or takeout, and, uh, fifteen dollars for an adult, ten dollars for children.
Okay, thank you very much. Councilwoman Wector?
Yes, um, I have a title for the senior center, and it is to hire, uh, Carol Schroeder, as, did I say that right?
Yeah.
Okay, um, as an agent services aide for the senior center, and starting pay rate of, uh, I have fifteen dollars and fifty cents, is that correct? And with an effective start date of four twenty-one, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make that motion, gee, oh, I'm sorry, I'll second.
You can make it, that's okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried, so, thank you, anyone else? Sarah, anything else?
Uh, no.
Okay, um, so upcoming board commission meetings, uh, historic preservation, are you gonna have that on May thirteenth?
I think we might, I expect it is.
Okay, so May thirteenth at five forty-five P M, zoning board is May eighth at six P M, planning board is April seventeenth at six thirty P M, town board meeting is April twenty-eighth at six P M, and the town hall is closed this Friday for Good Friday. So, with that, I'll just go motion to adjourn.
Yeah, motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carried.